Yes.
Thank you, Sarah.
No problem.
Okay. And did my screen freeze again or not? Okay, so as I was commenting, we are using the ClearGov platform for assembling the budget. And all the background materials from the different departments can be found on this, on this platform. You'll see Andrew sent out an email around six this evening, giving you access to the digital budget booklet. But in addition to the booklet, there is background information that we will also be giving you access to. So the booklet is expanded from years past in terms of additional information and graphs comparing, you know, current year to the proposed year. And you're able to do some additional comparisons based on the materials that are available on the ClearGov platform. So I'm hopeful that you'll find this very helpful to you. And we'll look forward to your comments as to how we can make it as easy and accessible to you as we proceed with, with the process. We are optimistic that this will be a good platform for us as we, as we move forward. So any questions on the ClearGov and accessing it?
How do we access it other than what I got was a PDF?
Right, so Andrew will be sending additional login information and how you can get into some of the background materials that are also available online.
Okay, thank you.
So yes, we'll be sending out additional instructions on that.
Greg, will this be available to the public as well, the access to this?
Yes, it can be, yes.
And how would they go about getting access?
So again, we'll, we'll put on the, on the webpage, a budget page that people can click on to enter into the, some of the information that's available.
Great, thank you.
Andrew's jumped in when I, if I'm not saying something correct. So let me start out, as I like to do, with sort of the big picture. And in terms of our projections for next year, obviously a work in progress and much work still to be done. But nonetheless, where we are today in the proposed FY '23 budget, coming in at a total of just under 39 million. And breaking that down into its major components, you can see on the screen, 18.8 million for the, for the regional district and for the vocational school. About 200,000 for the vocational school, the rest for our regional, regional school. 12.4 million for town operations. All the departments except for the enterprise funds, water and sewer, which are listed separately at 1.7. Capital expenditures have increased this year. We're tapping some additional reserves from the water department in particular to go a little higher on our capital expenditures. That, that 3.6 figure does not include a proposed bond, which we'll get into when we get into capital, using community preservation funds to help from the two new athletic fields, the swingy upgrade renovation and also the burn dump. But more to come on that later. The rest of debt payments are a million even roughly. And then, as I said, the enterprise fund at 1.7, community preservations are assumed at about 0.6, just to keep it where it was in the current year for easy comparison. But that will depend on recommendations from the community preservation committee and the different applications that they will be reviewing. And then just under a million for various state assessments, our OPEB payments and abatements for, for, for appeals to tax, tax bills. So in total, all total, that's a $38.9 million worth of expenditures. So overall, it's up about 2.6% from current year expenditures. I'd like to just take a minute to, to give you a very quick overview of what all of this buys you in terms of the services that are delivered. Again, I don't need to read all of these lines, but just an array of quick samples of the various services that are provided. The water and sewer utilities, terms of the 200 million gallons of water processed for, for drinking and also processed for cleaning it before it gets put back into the environment. Plowing and de-icing roads, trash, tax bills, et cetera, et cetera. Again, just a sampling, but a lot of services being provided day in and day out. And again, I'll just take a minute to applaud staff in continuing to provide all these services despite COVID and the various challenges that COVID has provided us over the last couple of years now. But we have provided all these services without interruption despite those additional challenges. So my hat's off to staff for, for continuing to provide all these services without, without skipping a beat. So quite, quite well done. So obviously with any budget, a lot of assumptions behind the numbers. So some of the assumptions being made are that citizens want the current level of services that we are providing. They don't want to see any decrease in those services. We assume that taxpayers are willing to accept a 2.5% hike in taxes. We lowered that in 20 with COVID and a little less in the current year. But this going forward in FY '23, we are assuming that taxpayers are willing to accept the more traditional 2.5% tax hike in order to keep services where they have been. This assumes also that we level fund our total exclusions, that or capital exclusions, or use of extra levy capacity. So this current year, for example, instead of actually voting a separate capital exclusion, we have excess levy capacity that we could tap. And it accomplishes the same end in terms of tax impacts. It's just a slightly different approach and doesn't require that extra vote for the, that a capital exclusion vote does. But it has the same impact in terms of taxes. We continue a fairly aggressive funding of infrastructure, infrastructure needs, as I mentioned, accelerating it a bit with some use of water reserves that have built up. And we are anticipating and hope that we will be able to tap into a number of new grant opportunities that are, that are opening up both at the state and federal level. The state through its ARPA funds are putting additional monies into, into water and sewer infrastructure, as well as some climate resiliency, along with a list of other items. And then the federal infrastructure bill is also getting rolled out, though we're still waiting for the, the details on how to access those funds. But we are anticipating being able to accelerate some of our capital needs if we are successful in getting some of those infrastructure dollars. There are some adjustments in, in a few departments based on some higher demands. In particular, the harbor master, a small bump in conservation because of, on a 50% increase in permitting activity. And we do need to talk about some additional pressures in, in public safety and public, public health and public safety both. So health, fire and police, which will be discussions as we, as we go through this budget. Goal of this budget is to get some assistance with mapping out a long-term facilities needs and use of town properties. So where, where should we make a definitive decisions about DPW garage? And if we are going to either build on a new site or renovate and expand on the existing site? What's the long-term game plan for public safety and for town hall and senior center? And see if we can get a clear roadmap going forward for those various needs and what resources and town lands we have to use. Obviously, we want to continue to maintain our strong fiscal condition in terms of maintaining a triple A bond rating and maintaining our reserves at that targeted level, which is in that 10% range. So we are able to dip into that because we are a bit over that at this point. So just a little bit, some of the key challenges. Again, these are not all that new. We've been talking about these challenges and we need to make some decisions now. Certainly in, in public safety, what is the appropriate size and operations for the town? So we have talked at length about the public safety dispatch. So we need to make a decision in the next few months on that question. Decision may be to put it before the voters, but nonetheless, the decision as to how to move forward. If the decision is to keep dispatch in-house, then we will need to increase some resources, both on the capital and operating side. And as I mentioned, the, the budget as it's crafted today in this, which roll out here, does assume some additional hours in the harbor master. But we need to talk more about the health department in terms of its hours. So again, on capital, we continue to hit that 3 million plus target, which is, which is good. We, as I say, are hoping to accelerate using some, some additional reserves and also tapping into some of the new grant monies that are, that are available. And looking down the road, we, we really need to start planning on projects that'll make us more resilient to the impacts of climate change, bigger storms, surging seas. We face a number of challenges in order to protect us and make us more resilient in light of those changes. And obviously, the third one, no surprise, is managing the school district budget and how that impacts either taxes or the rest of our budgets. They struggled to keep, you know, in that range of 3.25 to 3.75. Their tentative budget they'll present tomorrow night during a public hearing. They will be targeting a 3.5% increase overall. That's prior to adjustments for apportionment. And so we'll hear those apportionment figures tomorrow. But the 3.5 doesn't allow them to do what they think they should be doing. So there are challenges there. And, and there's already talk about the, the need for the third major capital project on the school level, that being the Essex Elementary School project. The timing of that obviously will have a significant impact on taxes. If we can wait until we are close to retiring the high school debt, which is in early 30s, then the impact of that new, the third project, the elementary school in Essex would, would have a much lower impact on everyone's tax terms. So those are, as I say, we've been talking about these three major challenges. They haven't changed that much. They're still with us and we still need to, to deal with them. So in looking at new revenues for next year, so again, assuming this walks us through those, those new revenues. If we assume a 2.5% increase, about 685,000 in, in new revenues there. New growth came in, we're at 175 this year, which was higher than what we budgeted. So we're using that number again for next year, always a little bit of a guessing game. But as I drove around town today, watching a house being torn down completely and a new house going to be put up, that, that helps our, our tax base. So it does seem to be a healthy amount of additions, renovations continuing on in town. We do show a very slight dip in, in local receipts. State aid probably might come in a little higher than level, maybe 5,000 over what we currently are getting, but not, not a big change there. Enterprise fees, again, 2.5% increase on those fees, bringing in 6,000. As I was indicating, a little higher use of reserves, mainly on the water reserve, 166,000 as a net. And then reallocation of some funds. So we have lower debt. And so we, as I say earlier, our strategy has been to reallocate those funds towards capital. So including the reallocated funds, we have a total of 1.1 million, which is about a 2, 2.7%, I think it's a 2.6 earlier, 2.7% increase in, in funds. So where, where might those go?
Hey Greg.
Yeah, yeah, go ahead.
Quick question on the local receipts line. Do, do we know the actual for fiscal 2021?
Yes. Yeah, that came in, I want to say around 2.8 or 9. I could double check that, but I think that's, it came in right around there.
2.8 or 9, okay, thanks.
Yeah, yeah. And so we bumped it up to 2.5 this past year and the year before. So not nearly as conservative as we had been in the past. So where might that 1.1 million go? So this is a snapshot of where those additional dollars would be used. So for salaries, most contracts are calling for 2% pay hike for fiscal '23. And there's, as I say, a little bit of boost in some hours. So overall, it's a 2.1 and 146,000 more. Health insurance, we are anticipating a higher increase than the 3.3, but we have some extra capacity in that account. We've, you know, every year we, we take our best guess and we've been on the conservative side. So we don't need to raise the health insurance, the full 7 or 8% that we're being told to anticipate. Health inflation is, is back on the, on the table. We've done quite well in the last few years. In fact, we had an actual decrease in our health insurance premium two years ago. But this, they are telling us to anticipate health costs inflating again. And as I say, we have some capacity, so we're able to absorb some of the increase. And I'm showing another 44,000, 3, 3.3% increase. On the pension, we're, we're facing an 8% increase. And then we also have a bump up in our OPEB contribution, which is planned. So every year we, we up the, the OPEB contribution, that's for the retiree health benefit that we're obligated to pay once people retire. And so the pension fund being managed by the county system is, is trying to, excuse me, trying to catch up for those years of underfunding. And so we still have a number of years at 7 and 8% increases before we will be fully funded in the early 30s. For operating expenses, showing a 1.75% increase overall at 70,000. I have some nervousness with this number, just with the question mark of where inflation is going. We, we haven't seen the inflationary pressures in the last few years that we are seeing right now. Bit of a guessing game as to where it's going next. Is it, is it a temporary transitory bump? Or is it something more permanent and getting baked into, into the system? So we'll have to see how that all weighs out. Certainly, we're seeing pressures on energy costs, which are significant for some of our operations. Excuse me. And other areas, but energy is what I worry about the most, I think. On the capital, as I say, we're bumping that up a bit from the base of 3.3 up to 3.6. And then on the school side, I'm assuming a 3% increase. So with apportionment, the 3.5, if, if the enrollment patterns continue as they have in the last couple of years, it's during a phase where it's favoring us in terms of we, we pay a little less than that total overall and Essex pays a little more. The roles were reversed. If you go a few years further back, when apportionment was, was working against us and we were adding more students relative to Essex and therefore picking up a higher share of, of the increase. This assumes that we're picking up a slightly lower share and that it comes in at 3%. So again, that's, that's subject to change and we will see how that all, all comes together in the coming couple of months here. As I say, school, school department will be presenting their preliminary budget tomorrow evening.
Hey Greg.
Yes.
On pension and OPEB, is that the, the total number that goes into ordinarily the OPEB warrant article item?
No, so the, the OPEB number is around 270,000, give or take. So we increase that about 2.5 to 3% each year. And then the bulk of this increase, 124,000 in addition, is the bulk of that goes to pension.
Okay, so we're sticking with our, our essentially a 2 to 4% increase to the.
To OPEB, that's correct, yes.
Alright, thank you.
Yep, yep, we're sticking with that, that funding schedule that has us being fully funded again in the early 30s, maybe a little earlier if, you know, if we do a little better with, with investments than, than estimated. And so far, we have, so we hope that continues. So as I say, the, the budget here does include some additional hours in the, in the harbor master department for additional on-water patrolling. Some small increase in hours for the CONCON staff based on increasing in permitting activity. And it also is anticipating a change in how we do custodial work. And, and this anticipates a full-time custodian versus the part-time that we have this year in creating a facility, facility budget. And we can help pay for that, those additional hours by covering the custodial needs at the, at the library. The, the library would like to talk further about that as we, as we get into some of the details, some of these proposals. And as I indicated earlier, one of the big decisions that we need to confront in the next couple of months is where do we want to go with staffing, police, fire and also board of health. So to back up just a minute, both the harbor and CONCON, extra dollars can become from their fees that they collect. So CONCON with higher permitting is bringing in additional dollars with their applications. So those additional dollars can cover those, those boost in hours for the CONCON. And similarly, the harbor is, is, those expenses are paid for with the water, various waterway fees. So it's not a hit to, to the taxes for the general fund. We are probably going to have an opportunity to do something similar with the Department of Health, with our health department staffing. And at least for the next few years, additional state monies and federal dollars will be available. But again, something that we need to flush out a little more in detail. We're waiting for some of those details on funding to be released. They haven't released those details yet, but it's this discussion that we'll need to have going forward. Just to complete the list, so on, on police side, pressures from police reform, which will most likely lead to a loss of our, many of our reserve officers because they are being required now to be trained to the same level as a full-time police officer. So we anticipate that our reserves, once they are fully trained, will no longer want to be reserved. They're going to go off and find full-time employment. And so that's going to make it difficult for us to continue to rely on reserves. And we may need to boost our full-time complement in the police. And then on the fireside, again, the challenges of, of staffing. Currently, as you know, we, we staff with three full-time firefighters. We have pretty much lost our reserve force, or not reserve force, but our call force. And if they are back-to-back or simultaneous ambulance calls, that's a minimum of four people that are needed to, two, two in each ambulance to run. And then there's the two and two out standard that is highly desired for natural fires. So there's a real desire from, from fire to have sufficient staffing to provide those four, four on every shift rather than three. We have one, again, I'm getting a little bit into the weeds and we'll get into this later. It would require hiring three more since we have one floater now. And there again, for the, for the first few years, that could be paid for through what's called a safer grant. But some decisions on that are going to be needed sooner rather than later. That's something we want to pursue. But these are details that we will get into as we start meeting in January, as we review these, these proposals. So this just highlights some of the changes that are happening. I just talked about the staffing, I've talked about pension, talked about capital. We are also spending more on IT and software needs. But it's interesting, we, we sort of, Andrew and I both sort of asked the question, yeah, I wonder how we compare? And coincidentally, we're involved with the regional effort. And the gentleman who's, is heading up that, who's the IT director in Danders, had just written an article that will be appearing, appearing in the MMA beacon pretty soon. Where our, what we're spending as a percent of total budget is actually a bit below the norm. I was getting concerned that we were getting up there, but relative to sort of the standards, we're not. It just sort of shows that we were fairly, fairly low on that expenditure area. But it is catching up as we, with everything going to the cloud and your subscription-based payments and making sure you have desktops that are up to the task. It's costing money. So we, we are seeing an increase in our, in our IT cost. So just a bit more on, on capital. This is continuing the three, three to three and a half billion on a cash. This is continuing the three, three to three and a half million on a cash basis. Um, and again, we are able to to grow that number because as we retire debt, we've. Turned that either into a capital exclusion or tapping our extra levy capacity to the same effect. Um, so for example, where our debt is dropping by by eighty four thousand for next year and we can. Raise that, we can redirect that eighty four thousand towards capital as we retire debt. So that's enabled us. To grow our annual expenditure on capital so that we are able to start catching up on the backlog that we've had.
Greg, do you know what that number drops to the following year?
It it's a similar amount. There is a big drop off in twenty four.
Okay.
And. If if that table isn't in the ClearGo platform, we'll we'll get it up there.
It is. It is, I just didn't have much time.
Yeah. So so you will, we can take a deeper dive in in terms of those year to year projections of debt. I I do show in the five year plan that that you'll see. Bonding for a new DPW facility. Obviously, we need to make a decision about where it goes and what it is. Um, but as a, assuming that we make those decisions, I'm showing bonding for a new facility in twenty six. Um, and we will have retired additional debt. That we can take on that that new debt without increasing taxation. So the, without the bonding, you know, if we're doing three plus million every year. Um, you know, this fifteen year plan shows over forty five million in in new capital expenditures. Um, and then come the early thirties, uh, we. We retire even more debt. Uh, we are almost debt free on the town side. Obviously, if we include incurred new debt in twenty six, then obviously that that won't be the case, but it'll. It'll nonetheless, there is other debt that that is fully retired. Um, and in addition to that. Our our pension and OPEB liabilities should be fully funded as well. So those, those three items being retiring the rest of our current debt. And retiring retiree liabilities, uh, that frees up significant funds where we could be. Needing to do larger projects and bonding. And and so if we can hold on to the early thirties, then then we are in pretty good shape. And my last comment about capital is the Essex Elementary, which I had mentioned earlier. Um, is the third major project that the district will be looking at. The the high school debt retires in in thirty four, I believe. And so if if you could hold off, uh, and I emphasize that if because there are pressures there. If you could hold off until. The early thirties, it would make payment of that. Uh, third major project on in the school district much easier in terms of burning taxpayers. So all something to keep in mind as we look look ahead in in the multi year plan for for capital. So just to take a look, uh, again, like to just sort of um, bring this back to the individual taxpayer or homeowner. Um, you see the the average value of home at one point two, the median. At uh, eight hundred and seventy six, sixty seven, sorry, read those backwards. Current property tax rate of ten sixty, what those two properties would pay in total taxation for this year. Um, assuming a two and a half percent increase, what does that mean to them? So to the, to the average home, it's a three hundred thirty dollar hike in taxation into the median valued home. It's two hundred and thirty. Just for comparison sake. Statewide, the average valued home is is just just under five hundred and fifty. Around a tax rate of about fifteen fifty compared to our ten sixty. Um, so they're they're paying about eighty five hundred dollars and. Uh, so, oh yeah, and the average increase is a little higher. You know, those those when you factor in places that do overrides or have excess levy capacity. Um, rather than two and a half, you, the average statewide is closer to two, two point eight. So those those are are median tax increase and average statewide are actually very, very similar. In in dollar impact. So just a, just a base of of comparison. So as I've been stressing this evening, we do have a number of decisions that will need to be made. During during this review process between January and and early March when we need to have a final, final budget. For presentation. Certainly dispatch is is a critical issue. Uh, if we are going to go in house, we will need to add additional capital and operating funds to the budget. And same with, if we want to add the police staffing and or fire staffing. On the police side, really not an opportunity for grant money. On the fire side, there is opportunity. But only for, you know, an initial three years. And then after that, there would be an impact to the budget. And then the third area for staffing discussions is a reorganization of the health department. Uh, moving towards a in-house health agent. Uh, with with staffs with. Clerical support. Right now, we farm that all out and we could bring a lot of that in house. Um, but the. Uh, there would be a net cost to us to do that. Um, so the board of health would like to. Pursue. Uh, this discussion with you in the next month or two. And as I say, we will get more details. About what available assistance there is to do this. Uh, the new bill that was passed by the House and Senate and signed by the governor just yesterday. Um, included a couple hundred million for increased support to local boards of health. We don't know exactly how that is going to be distributed, whether it's all a competitive grant or is there a. A formula basis that all communities will be receiving. We just haven't heard those details yet. Um, so we hope to have that in the next few weeks.
Greg, I'm sorry to interrupt.
No, it's quite all right.
With with that, um, the the help is that uh, one time is that from ARPA money? Or would that be an ongoing?
Well, so. The the ARPA money is is one time, so that that would just help with some additional hours, for example, for the health nurse. But the state funding that that is becoming available to the two hundred million. Again, we don't know if that's over a number of years and and what their thoughts are for long term funding of that. Um, so I don't have a good answer yet. As to what that state funding will be and how um, how long term it is. So to be determined.
Thank you.
As I mentioned, little concern about if inflation continues at its current pace, we haven't really built in. Uh, that that kind of assumption yet. And I think the next, next few months will be telling. Um, in terms of those inflationary pressures of how. Uh, how transitory they are, are they more permanent? And if they are more permanent, then we're going to need to do some recalibrating. And then finally. Uh, some resiliency planning efforts, uh, the capital budget does propose some uh, some dollars to support. A new water resources task force effort to update our. Uh, analysis of our long term, I'm talking. Forty fifty year term horizon. Try to get a handle on our water needs over the long term and what additional steps may be needed. Uh, it's likely the task force will need some additional professional assistance. In doing some of the hydrogeologic analysis. Um, that is is necessary to make some good, good decisions along those lines. And so you'll see that in uh, in the capital budget for some. Engineering support for that, for that work. And that's, that's a beginning. Um, I think resiliency planning and projects will will. Slowly ramp up over the coming years. Um, again, there are some new dollars being. Put into that, both at the state and federal level, that we'll certainly try to take advantage of when we can. Um, but it certainly will be a a new area that we need to begin to put more attention to it.
Greg, I have a question.
Yep, go ahead.
Can you go back to the previous slide, please? Uh, is the uh, regional dispatch in this budget budgeted as reinvesting in-house? Uh, level funded where it is now? Or how is, how is that being dealt with within this budget as it exists?
Yeah, as it exists, it's level funded, so it's status quo. I mean, it does have a slight increase for for salary increases, but basically it's it's a status quo budget in the in the current proposal.
Okay, could that, that could change dramatically if. The decision is made to keep dispatch in-house.
Correct.
Or if the decision is made to go regional, because either way it could ramp up or slide down some.
Yes, it won't ramp down that much in twenty three because it'll take. Um, might not take all of twenty three, but it will take the bulk of twenty three to make the transition. Um, so even if you would decide to go to regional. Um, you know, in the spring. Um, you won't see that much savings in in twenty three. You obviously will see significant savings in in twenty four. But but not so much in twenty three.
Thank you.
Other, other questions at this point? We've just got to, I think, one or two more slides and then we can open it up.
Well, I I'll do a follow on about that, the the call center. So. You mentioned if we did go to the regional call center, we really wouldn't see much operational savings because whatever the time it takes to implement, but. If it goes the other way, you mentioned that's more. Capex need, right? Upgrading, I don't know, whatever, radios, phones, right?
Right.
So my question is, what's what's the ballpark number on that?
Well, from a, from a equipment perspective. It's it's probably. You know, the one seventy five to two hundred thousand range for for capital needs.
Okay. So let's say I use two hundred thousand just to pick a number. I mean, given that we have a really big number planned in this budget for total capex, what is it, three? Three five, three six?
Yeah.
Right, so I guess where I'm going is. I gotta believe it wouldn't be that hard, right? If you needed to. You know. Switch it within that three six, right? In other words.
Right, there'd be some, there's there's some, some uh, horse trading that can be done.
Aren't you also assuming staffing increases?
Yes. So then the other side is is staffing, whether or not you want to go to. You know, so the. One extreme. The one end of the spectrum is to have full, two people on twenty four seven. So that would, that's that would basically double what our current staffing costs are today. So in 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 round numbers, you know, that's, that's in the three hundred thousand, three hundred fifty thousand dollar range.
So Greg, is anybody advocating for that, for the two people, or is that a chief, is the chief advocating for that?
Certainly, certainly the fire chief would advocate for that. Yes. Right, um, so just. As I always like to say, you've heard it from me many times, budgets are about choices. Uh, you know, what are we right sizing? You know, do we have the appropriate size? Uh, departments for the services that are being delivered, up or down? You know, do we, are we providing the right services? Would, you know, would citizens uh, agree to changes or not? Are there things that we're doing that we don't need to be doing, or are there the things that we aren't doing that we should? And what's the right design? Uh, do we have, do we have the right model? We're exploring two different models for dispatch in-house versus. Versus regional, um, should be be scrutinizing other service models for other services that are delivered. And then what about, do we have the right mix of funding? Obviously, we're we're extremely slanted towards the residential tax base that's, you know, ninety. Ninety six percent of our tax base practically is all residential. We have a very, very small commercial base. Um, but perhaps that's, that's okay with folks. We've talked about user fees, we've increased some. Um, it always, it never hurts to look at others. Um, we had talked about um, a room tax a couple of years ago. Uh, we pulled it off of the warrant because of COVID, because we were trying to shorten the 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 warrant. But we could be taxing um, stays, you know, the Airbnbs of the world. Uh, we could be collecting. A room tax on those stays. That would bring in some additional dollars. So again, these are are questions and and decisions. That we will be debating over the next few months. And and ultimately, the voters will will make those choices about which uh, which direction they want.
Hey Greg, on the, on the room tax thing, what? What is quote unquote market meaning like, do a lot of other towns already assess it or not many do or?
Uh, yeah, quite a few towns, particularly uh, or tourist towns certainly do. But yes. Yeah, it's it's pretty, it's becoming more and more common.
And I assume there's some kind of state, whatever, law regulation on how much you can charge, I assume?
Yes, yes. Oh, what is it? I want to say.
Well, you know, my next que, you know, my next question then, just what's the ballpark? What do we think we could get for?
Yeah, I I don't have a good sense of that because we. Most of our local rentals are not regulated. Because everyone rents for longer than six nights, so we don't require any permitting. So we don't have a good sense of that. I mean, you could, you know, just go on the various rental sites and see how many. Manchester addresses you find. So I I don't have a very good sense of how much this could bring in. I won't say it's a three percent charge, but I I could be wrong.
That's what I recall, three percent, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
This sound. We're going into the weeds at the moment. I'm going further into the weeds. If we don't know who's renting. How are we going to charge them? I mean, how are we, are we actually going to chase people down from from Venmo ads?
Well, we've actually done some of that. Um, as part of the, you know, to see if they uh. So if we see someone who's running for less than six nights, we we do chase them down. Um, and say you need to get a permit. They typically respond, well, I'll just do a six night minimum. Uh, so we lose them. But there, um, there is a requirement depending on, again, how how often they're renting, that they they do register with the state. And um, so they, there's that. There's that registration already. That most of them have to do.
Yeah, thank you. I I now that you mentioned, I do remember that there was some. We could go to the state and the state would charge it basically free money.
Right, so it actually is, it's all collected by the state and then they they give us our a quarterly check is how that, how the room tax works. So that we don't actually collect it.
Is it through like the platform, like say Airbnb, are they actually the ones that kind of collect it first?
Yes, yeah, they collect it first and then they they turn it over to the state.
And then, and then, got it, got it, okay.
Yeah. So that's, I mean, that's how the hotel tax works, same way.
And just to add one more comment, and while we're in the rabbit hole, Venmo is now. Reporting in anybody, any payments over total of two hundred dollars. So if anybody's trying to pay a room fee. That way, that is going to be reported to the government as well.
So finally, my last slide, just looking at next steps. So finally, my last slide, just looking at next steps. You know, now that we were, we'll get you the information, we'll give you the access to the ClearGov platform. You'll be able to start reviewing all of the data, including the, the actual budget book. We have tomorrow night, there's the presentation by the school committee on their preliminary budget. And then that'll be followed up by a second hearing that they'll have into January first of February. So January and February is when the finance committee is, is earning their big bucks, meeting weekly and reviewing all the details. Talking to different department leaders as, as needed to review requests and, and make sure we got full understanding of what's being required and requested. And then obviously, we target to finalizing all of the, the budget numbers by early March. And getting ready for what is assumed to be the April annual town meeting. So a, a lot of information to absorb. I know that you didn't have a chance to, to review the booklets before we got started this evening, but this evening isn't really designed to go and, you know, deep dive. It's really just to give you this, this broad overview and highlight some of what I see as the key decisions and, and, and issues that we need to address as we go through the budget, in addition to, you know, the usual scrutinizing and, and making sure that the numbers make sense. So it's really an introduction to the new budget. And as I say, some of the issues that you should be paying attention to as you start into it. And come the first of the year, we'll, we'll do just that. We'll start diving in. But I'm happy to answer any, any questions people have right now, understanding that you haven't had an opportunity to, to review and to, to digest any details.
I've got a question, Greg. Relative to the discussions that we'll, we'll be having for different staffing models for public safety, are there, are there, or that we, consultants that we know of, or can we look into some that might be able to provide us some, some guidance? I always feel willfully unqualified to really analyze those, those different models.
So, I mean, the short answer is yes, we could, we could reach out to some, to some consultants who could provide us some guidance and some comparisons. It's, it's helpful to obviously frame what questions you have and what's particular areas. Before we bring someone on board, but we can certainly work on that.
Thanks.
Greg, got a question on, on, on the dispatch and we have a an annual meeting, our, our, our town meeting in April. And assuming that that issue goes to a referendum in April, whatever the decision is, there could be some financial implications for that in this coming fiscal year, which you touched on a little bit earlier. Does the budget have some flexibility to accommodate that? If, say, we've got to start to put, if, if dispatch stays here, we would want to start to put more money into that, and that's not in the budget for fiscal twenty-three. I understand if it goes out, probably not too much happens because it's status quo for the majority of fiscal twenty-three.
Right. So one scenario is that you would have, you know, option A and option B as a warrant article. Option A, go to regional. Option B, keep in-house and appropriate an additional X dollars in order to bolster the in-house operation. So you would be asking voters to approve one or the other with a specific new dollar amount. Under each, under each plan. I think that, I mean, that's certainly one way that you could handle it.
Understood. And, and I know we will have all of those numbers probably in the first, certainly in the first quarter of this coming year. Based on the study that's being done, et cetera. So.
Yes.
Couldn't you also, couldn't you also delay the enhancement a year so it doesn't impact the twenty twenty-three budget?
I, I mean, yes, obviously you could. You could, you could do status, you could do status quo for another year. It's, we've operated this way for a long time. But, you know, there's, there's a desire obviously to, to move one way or the other.
I, I think in terms of both, both chiefs, that the software enhancements would be needed this year, no matter what. And unless we were going to regional where that would be taken care of in the regional. But there's no point in delaying those software enhancements. It's a lot of important data in terms of how services are rendered. The, the staffing, staffing enhancement needs to be considered for the variations that we could do with that staffing enhancement. But that, that would be something that would come out of the feasibility study to some extent, plus decisions that need to be made about what level of staffing we need. I don't think that we can delay the whole thing another year.
Perhaps could delay the staffing piece.
I think there'd be a lot of resistance to that on the fire side. Not just from the chief, but from the whole department.
And doesn't that also include the staffing, how the state's changing the police, who can, the, the reserve police?
I think that's separate.
It is separate, but, but the way the police are staffed right now, they have a lot of reserves and so they, they fill in for dispatch for quite a few of the, the, the slots. And they're paid overtime. And if they're all full-time police officers and not reserves, that's going to be very costly.
We're not going to resolve this one tonight.
Right.
It, it seems that the fire, the, 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 the issue with dispatch is a little bit in our control. The police thing, I know the Chief Fitzgerald is keeping an eye on when these rules are going to go fully in effect. But that's not so much under our control. When the state says this is what you got to have when, then things start to happen.
Right. And, and they are, they're behind schedule with all implementations. So we'll, we'll have to see how that evolves.
So Greg, this is Mike, you know, I'll file us under that same clause, you know, not going to get resolved tonight, but to me, I think for future discussion, I'd like to talk, you know, about that local receipts line and, you know, I know we're a little less conservative, but in my mind, we're still pretty, pretty conservative. Especially when you mentioned what twenty twenty-one actual was, so. That seems like a good opportunity there.
Yep, yep. All on the table.
So just to remind people, um, we plan to have the FinCom meetings in twenty twenty-two on Thursday night, starting the first Thursday in January. Weekly.
So I didn't have any other, you know, details to present unless you wanted to spend a little more time going into anything that was mentioned during the overview. But really wanted to just tee things up. Get things introduced and have you take some time between now and, and the first of the year to do some casual reading, as time allows. And, and then we'll, as I say, we roll up our sleeves and, and get into the, into the details first of the year. But I'm happy to answer questions if you have them now, or we can, your, your pleasure, we can call it a night and, and, and wait for, for those me, future meetings to, to get into the details. But as I say, we'll, we'll be sending out to you the links so you can have full access to, to the platform.
I'm happy to say thank you very much. You've given us a lot to think about.
Eric, could you give us a, a preview of what the schedule is, not just the evening, but who's up first?
I haven't determined that yet. I, I think I need to touch base with Greg on that. I think that probably the first night, we would go through an overview of the budget in its totality. And then we would be meeting with the major department heads over the next few weeks.
So starting on the fourteenth?
No.
No?
Wait a minute, let me, I'm sorry, let me look. I've got so many dates going through my head.
Really? Shocking.
So the first meeting would be on the sixth to go over the overview and then start talking to departments on the thirteenth.
I'm, I'm sorry, I'm wondering. Okay.
And I'll talk to Greg as to who, you know, who we deal with first. And part of that will be based on the overview that we have and, and the opportunity people have to look at that between now and January sixth. Which is soon.
Very soon.
Yes.
And unfortunately, this year, we don't have as much time as we've enjoyed over the last two years. That we know of.
I'll, I'll put in an early plug to think about a bylaw change that puts town meeting the first of May rather than the first of April.
Oh, I would love that.
I'm not sure of the history. I'm making it the first of April, but that's something we could do a little homework on perhaps.
I have a little bit of insight. Um, the first of April gives us enough time to prepare the warrant for the election. And announce it. And if we go to May, then we have to figure out before the town meeting what needs to go on the ballot.
Right.
And that's what Essex does. And that's the argument that we've always had, that we want to have a, a ballot that actually represents what the town meeting did instead of guessing.
Yeah, yeah. You could push off the election, but that's another question too.
But we want to have the election the same time as Essex.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, with that, I'm happy to make a motion to adjourn the finance committee meeting. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Dean seconds it. I'll take a roll call vote. Andy?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
I believe Maury left and Sarah votes yes. Thank you.
I'll take a motion to adjourn the selection.
Second.
So moved.
So seconded before it was moved. Take it. Anne's, Anne's moved it and Becky is seconded. Roll call vote. Eli?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Anne?
Yes.
Becky?
Absolutely, and happy holidays, everyone.
And the chair votes yes.
Yep, thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you very much. And I'm looking forward to having a little reading material to keep me sleepy.
Along with all the policies, Anne.
All right, everybody. Take care.
Thanks, Greg Knight. Thank you, Greg.